All stand please.
Holy and gracious Father, we thank you for the gift and the glory of this day for allowing us to live in such a beautiful part of your creation, the city that we call Vero Beach. We pray, Father, as we gather today and take counsel as leaders of this community, that you would give us wisdom to make wise decisions and right actions for peace and the welfare of the citizens of this city. I pray, Lord God, that you would give us minds to understand, hearts to receive, as we listen to one another. I pray, Father God, that we would understand that being good neighbors means that we love our neighbor as ourself and we do to others as we would have them do to us. Lord God, bless us this day, that we might be a blessing to others, protect and keep peace in our community, and let this city be a shining light of what it means to live in unity throughout this nation. And we pray this in the name above every name, Jesus, our Lord.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, I open the April 1st, 2014, mediating of the Vero Beach, regular meeting of the Vero Beach City Council. Let's see, it's 9:30 now. We'd certainly like to finish before lunchtime, hopefully 11:30, and I will be working to accomplish that purpose. Mrs. Vok, would you like to call the role, please?
Mr. Fletcher?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mayor Winger?
Here. All right, preliminary matters, agenda additions, deletions, and adoptions.
Mayor, we have one item I passed out. It's an amendment to leases for an airport tenant that is doing a refinancing, and we could put that under city manager, city attorney, wherever you like.
Where would you like it, though, Wayne?
It's actually a city manager matter. It has to do with the airport.
Move for approval as amended. Second.
All in favor? All right. All right. The agenda is adopted. We have this morning four proclamations. I shall read the first. And this Vern Melvin, are you here, please? Seeing he's not here, I'll read it. "The city of Vero Beach prides itself on giving back to the community, contributing to the quality of life among our citizens, and whereas the Guardian Ad Lightem program speaks for the best interests of abused, abandoned, and neglected children who are involved in the court system, and whereas more than 200 children in the community suffer from some form of abuse or neglect each year, and whereas Vero Beach community members are encouraged to join together throughout the month of April to raise awareness of those children fallen, victims to abuse, neglect, and abandonment, and whereas this effort will give abused, neglected, and abandoned children in our community an improved chance for a safe, permanent home and a positive future. Now therefore, the City Council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2014 as Guardian Ad Lightem Month in the city of Vero Beach, and we urge all citizens to give of their time to make a difference in the lives of our most vulnerable children by volunteering with Guardian Ad Lightem program." And since there's nobody here, I'll pass this to the city clerk for Child Abuse Month.
Good morning, everyone. Mr. Robertson, would you like to come out to the desk when I read this? And for those of you who noticed all the flags, the white flags, in front of the Press Journal the past week or so, this was an incredible memorial for all the young children that have lost their lives through abuse. National Child Abuse Prevention Month will be recognized throughout the United States during the month of April, and preventing child abuse and neglect is a community problem that depends on involvement among people throughout the community. During periods of economic challenges, families feel more vulnerable, find themselves in stressful situations without community resources they don't know how to cope. As a result, child abuse and neglect increases dramatically, and all citizens should become involved by making sure each family has the support they need to raise their children in a safe, healthy, and nurturing environment. Effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among state and local government agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement, and business community. Castle's mission is to prevent child abuse and neglect through education and awareness. Now therefore, the City Council of the city of Vero Beach does hereby proclaim the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. In the city of Vero Beach, we urge all citizens to take this time to understand, recognize, and respond to the serious problem by helping families to prevent child abuse and to strengthening our community. Thank you very much, Chris. Would you like to say?
Yes, my name is Chris Robertson. I'm the Development Director with Castle. Castle's been around for 33 years, and as you mentioned, our last memory field, which was a couple of weeks ago, the flags were flying at the Press Journal there on US-1. There were 122 flags that represented and memorialized the children who died from abuse or neglect in the state of Florida this past year. Luckily, in Indian River County, there were no children. There were no flags there. But next year, we know that there are three. So that field serves as a reminder, and hopefully everybody can come together so we don't see those flags flying and memorialize those children. We hope just to have one flag that represents what we are doing to curb child abuse and neglect in the state of Florida. But thank you very much to the mayor and to the entire council. Thank you, and the city of Vero Beach.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Come right around the front here.
Mr. Menjer? Mr. Menjer is the Airport Director here at the city of Vero Beach. This is a proclamation, "Whereas aviation plays a critical role in the lives of our citizens, as well as the operation of our business and agriculture, and whereas the state of Florida has a significant interest in the community vitality of aviation and aerospace manufacturing, commercial services, community airports, and aviation education, and whereas there are 19 commercial services, 110 general aviation community airports, and more than 8.5 percent of Florida gross state product, which results from a business dependent upon aviation, whereas Florida commercial airports accommodate more than 143.5 stumble billion, B as in a billion, passengers annually, ranking Florida second in the nation, and international airports in Florida accommodates more than 28 million international passengers annually, which is 19.5 percent of the total international passenger in the nation." That's much larger than I would have thought, Eric. More than half, 52.7 percent of Florida's visitors arrive each year by air. Florida's general aviation community airports accommodate more than 9 million visitors and business travelers annually, and whereas air cargo operations account for more than 6.6 billion in annual economic activity in Florida, which represent 8th percent of the nation's air cargo, and total aviation representation more than 97 billion in annual economic activities, and numerous leading aviation companies have headquarters and a major recent or measured presence in Florida. And whereas, therefore, the City Council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, do hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all servants of Aviation Week, Aviation Month, excuse me, Aviation Appreciation Month. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
That's 143 billion passengers. That's a serious number.
And they're not all at Vero Beach, I can tell you that. Obviously, this is a state proclamation, represent to the city, from the governor, and also to other cities and communities all over the state. The governor has felt it important enough to represent and recognize the aviation impact on the state of Florida. So of the $97 billion, Vero Beach does help and contribute, and the airport is proud to be a part of the economic engine of the community. Matter of fact, I think later on the agenda, the Chamber of Commerce will be speaking to you about the Enterprise Zone, which is located at the airport and the vicinity of the airport. So we're proud to be a part of it. I'd like to say that the businesses at the airport are the heart of the airport and the community, and it's those folks that really need to be patted on the back for this proclamation. I think that's who the governor was trying to make the point of that. So anyway, thank you. I'll be happy to accept it, and we'll put that in the airport and show it proudly.
Thank you for your work, Eric. You do a damn good job managing that place.
Mr. Kramer?
Okay, this is a proclamation for our police officers and our 911 communication workers. If you guys could come up, I'd greatly appreciate it, if you can get an idea of how many people we've got that help out in this process. The proclamation states that emergencies can occur at any time that require police services, and when emergencies occur, the prompt response of police officers is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And the safety of our police officers is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Vero Beach Police Department's 911 Communication Center. And public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And dispatchers of the Vero Beach Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals. And each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, the City Council of Vero Beach, Florida, does hereby proclaim April 13th through April 19th, 2014, as National Telecommunications Week in honor of the men and women who diligently and professionally keep our city and citizens safe.
Don't look around. You're on the spot.
After last year, we appreciate all that you've done, and we thank you for believing in us and keeping us around. We really appreciate it, so thank you.
Just as a note to the mayor and council, these are the folks who really are the backbone, the guys that are out in the field, and the chief, I'm sure, could address it much better than I, are really that support service that they need to make sure that there is backup and that there's a lifeline in case something does really go south on us. But we appreciate the efforts.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to public comment. The first scheduled event is Mrs. Helen Helane, I'm sorry, Castle Town, Indian River Chamber of Commerce, to discuss the Enterprise Zone Annual Report.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Thank you so much for giving us time this morning to present our Enterprise Zone Annual Report. As you know, and as Eric Menjer mentioned, the city of Vero Beach partnered with Indian River County several years ago to enact the Enterprise Zone. What I'm going to do this morning, give you a brief overview of the program, its history, its benefits, and then talk about some of the accomplishments we've had over this past fiscal year, which ended September 30th. The overall goal of Florida's Enterprise Zone Program is to encourage private investment in distressed areas. An enterprise zone typically shows signs of extremely high unemployment and extremely high poverty. Back in 1992, the state of Florida enacted one of the first Enterprise Zone Programs in the country. It is now administered by the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. It does require legislative approval. There are several tax advantages that are associated with an Enterprise Zone Program, and I'll get into those in just a minute. Ours was designated in October of 2005, and we pursued the designation primarily to help our private businesses to get back on their feet after the 2004 hurricanes. And primarily, it was our largest private employer, Piper Aircraft, and it has worked. There currently are 63 Enterprise Zones in Florida. Some are designated as rural, and some are urban. We're considered an urban enterprise zone. Locally, within our region, there are Enterprise Zones in Fort Pierce, Palm Bay, and Indian Town. Okeechobee has an Enterprise Zone. Osceola County, Kissimmee, has an Enterprise Zone as well. And as I've mentioned to this, to you all before, back in November, the Enterprise Zone Program is scheduled to sunset on December 31st, 2015. It is up for sunset review every 10 years, and we have been working very closely with our legislators and with other Enterprise Zone coordinators around the state to be sure that this program does continue for another 10 years. I know that the audience can't see this, but this is a map of all the Enterprise Zones in Florida, so you can see that there are many and covers just about every part of the state. Our local Enterprise Zone comprises about 4.7 square miles, which does include the Vero Beach Municipal Airport, as well as the adjacent Gifford Community. The city of Felsmere has requested inclusion in our Enterprise Zone Program. Members of our Enterprise Zone Development Agency have supported that request. Again, that has to be done legislatively. It's just a sign. We post signs at the entrance to the Enterprise Zone, so people are more aware that the program is in place and where that location is. That happens to be my office phone number on the sign. If anyone has any questions, certainly they can call me. Some of the benefits, as I'd mentioned, there are certain sales tax and corporate tax credits and sales tax refunds that are available to companies that are located in the Enterprise Zone. When a company, and it's primarily focused on the business community, there is one program that can benefit a homeowner, and that would be the sales tax refund on building materials. But it's primarily set up to assist businesses. So sales tax refunds on business equipment that's used in the Enterprise Zone, building materials for new or renovations, new construction or renovations. Recently, you all approved the municipal sales tax exemption on electricity. And I will mention, with the exception of this last program, the sales municipal tax exemption on electricity, all the other programs only affect those state taxes. They have no effect on local taxes. Our role at the Indian River County Chamber of Commerce, as the Economic Development Director, I also serve as the Enterprise Zone Coordinator. Coordinate the monthly Enterprise Zone Development Agency meetings. We conduct workshops, meet with new businesses and existing businesses to go over the benefits and help them decipher which would be more applicable to their business. As I'd mentioned, legislative issues we're on top of, and process the refund requests. We also promote the program through our advertising, through trade shows, working with Enterprise Florida, which is our statewide economic development organization. I serve on a task force through Enterprise Florida to work to continue this Enterprise Zone Program for another 10 years. And we do collaborate with other entities, the City Council, of course, county government, civic organizations such as the Progressive Civic League of Gifford, Career Source Research Coast, formerly known as Workforce Solutions, and Enterprise Zone coordinators around the state. Just recently, you'll see the bottom picture, working with Career Source and the Gifford Progressive League, we got the mobile unit, Career Source Mobile Unit, to come to Gifford. It's there every Wednesday from 8:30 until 4:00 to better accommodate the residents of Gifford who are looking to either find a job or improve their job skills. I would just like to say that there is no funding allocated to this program, state or local. Any of the activities that we do to promote the Enterprise Zone just comes out of my Economic Development Division budget, but it's not a separate line item for the Enterprise Zone. All the refund requests are processed through the Florida Department of Revenue, and as I'd mentioned, local taxes are not affected, with the exception of the municipal tax on Briefly, the accomplishments of the last fiscal year, we have worked with local businesses and some new businesses that are looking at the Enterprise Zone. We conducted two workshops, and we promote the program. I'm an invited speaker to a lot of the civic organizations throughout the county, the Rotary Club, the Exchange Club, and the like, and presentations such as this, which is very beneficial because it's replayed often, and our local residents can look at it and can see it and find out what the program is all about. There were 119 jobs that were filled over the past year, and those are not necessarily new jobs created, but possibly positions that were open but filled. Over $500,000 in capital investment made in the Enterprise Zone. We also look at homeownership. The SHIP program, the State Housing Initiative program, which you might be familiar with, they process, the county processed 10 loans through the SHIP program. And as I'd mentioned earlier, the legislative awareness, working very closely with our legislators, as well as Enterprise Zone coordinators throughout the state of Florida. I'd just like to mention some of the companies that are in the Enterprise Zone. Piper Aircraft, of course, as you know. Gerard Equipment is over on Old Dixie Highway in the county, not within the city limits. But I wanted to point out, Tim Gerard, the president, made a brief presentation to our Enterprise Zone Development Agency meeting in February, and he pointed out how he makes a very strong effort in hiring local residents, especially Gifford residents. And he's one of those who believes in giving people a second chance. So even, perhaps they may have had some run-ins with the law in a prior life or in their history or any kind of criminal background, he believes in giving people a second chance. So I think that's great. Another one I wanted to point out, Walgreens. In working with this program elsewhere, I was the Enterprise Zone Coordinator in Collier County. Everglade City and Amakli are Enterprise Zones. And meeting with a representative of Walgreens, they pointed out that they specifically seek out locations in Enterprise Zones because they know that there are tax advantages to be had, and they did take advantage of the program, excuse me, they applied for a corporate tax credit, which was approved. United Parcel Service over on 41st Street hired 34 people in the past year. Family Dollar, I have an asterisk, that has not yet located, but they're making plans to locate on 43rd Avenue and 45th Street. And they selected that location because they know it's close to their customer base, and they too are going to make a concerted effort to hire residents of the Gifford community and locals so people can walk to work. And with that, what I would like to do is introduce you to the Chairman of the Enterprise Zone Development Agency, Mr. Chris Russell. Chris is with Oculina Bank, that's his day job, but he has really been a wealth of information, and we're very pleased to have him as our Chairman for the Enterprise Zone.
Thank you, Helene. Good morning. I don't know that I have much more that I can add, you know, from what Helene has told you. Helene is just tireless in her efforts in trying to promote the Zone. I not only have worked with her for my company, because as many of you know, we located a center inside the Enterprise Zone, and we're just thrilled with it. We invented, or we invested roughly about $1,008,000 over where we are, and we're just absolutely thrilled with it. We're also in the process of building another branch inside the Enterprise Zone that'll be right up the street from the airport itself. And we appreciate, Jim, as you know, I certainly appreciate your help, and Eric jumped right in and helped us overcome some hurdles with the FAA and things like that. We're very, very grateful for that. But again, Helene has just worked tirelessly. We've referred, many of us on that committee have referred people to Helene to work with in her position, and the feedback that we get from these people is unreal. I know that, again, you know, my personal findings with it, when we went to locate our center, I reached out to Helene immediately, who had me immediately meeting with council and how can we get this done, and how can we get it done quickly and with the least amount of effort. So she's really done just an amazing job, I think, of trying to make it an easier process. To give you just a little bit of a brief update on where we're headed this year, we do now have two new members of the EZDA. We've placed on there Ms. Linda Morgan. Many of you probably know Ms. Morgan. She is, she's a tireless community worker over there. She's a resident of the Gifford area. We're thrilled to have her there. I've gotten to know Linda now through some other stuff that's going on as well, and she's great. And then Mark St. Vincent, and Mark works for Piper Aircraft. And I thought it was excellent this year to be able to add someone from Piper to lend their thought process, if you will, to what we're doing as a group. And then I guess in my wrap-up, I wanted to say thank you, the city, the county, and you know, Jay is there so often at the meetings and willing to contribute. We've also got, as I mentioned before, Eric. Eric, I think, is probably at every meeting and very willing to contribute and give us some better information about how we can move the whole area forward. With you is the linchpin. Thank you again. And that's it. That's all I have. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
To the mayor and council, I would like to make a comment. You know, it's great to have a tenant like Oculina Bank coming on to the city property, but it's even better when they pay their rent up front.
Maybe I catch-
And Chris, I, for one, really appreciate that.
Happy to work with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
And thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Stradley is coming forward with, he's the Utilities Commission Chairman. He's going to report, give us a report of their meetings of March 19th and March 31st, yesterday.
Good morning. For the record, Scott Stradley, 1797 14th Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This month, or last month, we've had two meetings, over eight and a half hours worth of meetings, to be exact, and we accomplished, I think, a good bit. We've had, these are the first two meetings of the new Utility Commission, and I think we've coalesced into a good body with lots of different, all the members bring different strengths to the table, and I'm really looking forward to going forward. Yes, we'll take care of yesterday first, because it's the simplest. We just readopted the goals that we had, the old Utility Commission had presented to you, with just some minor tweaks and wording and clarifications, but substantially the same goals that we presented in December. So those will be our goals going forward, and that'll be the way we evaluate ourselves for this year. Yes, sir?
Mr. Stradley, I wouldn't like those goals the city clerk to give to the city council to be sure that we're exactly aboard on the goals. I personally may have some questions, but move forward, please.
Okay. And if, after Sherri gets finished making those little tweaks to them, we'll, I'm sure they'll be forward to you, and then we'll can take that up later. In the March 19th meeting, we had a joint meeting with the Finance Committee, and we looked at various ways to lower rates. And we had several, we had a long list of items that we had, or Mr. Gorey had hoped to get to, and we got to, I think, some of the big ones and some of the important ones. Just as, fundamentally in background, for every million dollars of savings that we can pull out of this budget, we can save about 1% of the rate on our rates. My estimate, my estimate of that was $1.45, and Mr. Kramer's estimate was $1.60. When you're looking at a big system like this utility, those two numbers are substantially the same. And for discussion, I think I'm going to use $1.50, because I can do that number in my head a little easier. So the first two issues we looked at were- So the first two issues we looked at were refinancing our current debt. We have two issues. We have the long-term bond, Series 203A, and we have some short-term bank financing. Mr. Dunlap, the city's financial advisor, was there, and he went over things in detail with us. And as we talked about it, I think it became clear to the, actually both commissions, that the long-term bonds were so close to actually paying them off, and that it doesn't make sense at this point in time to refinance them. The cost of refinancing would maybe outweigh the savings. So we made a motion that we do not recommend refinancing the Series 203A. That motion was seconded and passed unanimously. Then we started, we discussed the Series 208, which is the short-term bank financing, bank loan. And staff brought forward a plan where they're able to look at the requirements, our bonding requirements and our reserves, and have been able to locate sufficient capital to go ahead and, they believe, repay this loan. That will save us about $1,001,000, or again, a little bit more than 1% of the rates going forward. It won't affect our rates this year because of the way that they've been able to find these assets. So we made a motion that they pursue making sure that these requirements would be met, the bond requirements, and the other people would be happy, and that at the earliest convenient quarterly payment, the earliest convenient time that we pay this off, that motion was also seconded and passed unanimously.
And pardon me, and that's on the agenda under new business to ratify your decision, to ask the city council to agree to it.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's our recommendation. We then engaged a long discussion into financing capital assets, the benefits of that. And one of the things that I want to bring out is, we have had a policy, stated or unstated, of financing minor capital assets through our cash flow. We haven't taken out, we haven't financed anything since 1992, and I believe that in 1992, that was when we repowered Units 5 and Units 2 into a combined cycle unit. There was, there's been a lot of talk about the benefits of doing this going forward, or financing these costs going forward, but the costs that we have in our capital budget right now are primarily more repairs, more, the assets, the capital assets we need to buy to maintain our system the way it exists today. And by having adopted this five-year forward-looking budget, we do have the effect of rate smoothing and also matching the cost of operating the system today to the ratepayers today. If we were to finance these costs, we would be just passing these costs off to ratepayers in the future. And an example of some of these capital assets are transformers. When a transformer blows and we have to replace it, that's a cost that is more properly matched to the current ratepayers than to the future ratepayers. And that capital budget's about three, three point, three and a half, about three and a half million dollars a year going forward right now. There's been also a lot of talk about the work that we did last year on Units 5 and Unit 2. That was really more a maintenance issue than it was a long-term capital investment. It's more like a tune-up of a, a major tune-up of a car. Very complex car, very expensive car, no doubt. In fact, my, when I first tuned up my first car, it was a '56 Chevrolet. I needed six spark plugs. I didn't even need a timing light, because I could just turn the distributor by hand, and I'm sure some of you tuned up vehicles like that and just did it by ear. That was very inexpensive, but a major tune-up today on a modern car is a significant, significant outlay, not like the 10 bucks I spent back then. So we didn't really increase the useful life of Units 2 and 5 going forward, something that should be appropriately financed and added to future ratepayers. We kept it operating as it needed to be today or then, and it really is evidence that we didn't increase the future life. It's down right now, so it's, we're in the process of doing some more repairs on it. The, like, as I mentioned, the way we're budgeting now has a rate smoothing, the rate smoothing effect that Mr. Kramer, I think, was looking for. Again, it's, so, because we have a forward-looking, five-year capital budget. So we made a motion that the city council maintain the current historically, historic and prudent policy of saving for these repairs and maintenance items that are in the capital budget, and therefore stabilizing our rates through this prudent capital program. This motion was also passed unanimously. And certainly, if we were ever to engage on a major capital program, this policy that we currently have, that we're asking you to continue, would not preclude us from seeking long-term financing for a major capital program that would affect in future ratepayers. The, there was, as I say, Mr. Gory had, I think, approximately 20 items that he had hoped we would get through that day, and after six and a half hours, we got through about three or four. And so he's going to bring those things to the city manager, and he's going to do a SWOT analysis on it and bring those items back to us, and I'm going to ask him to explain what a SWOT analysis is for us, because I don't want to mess that up, so, Jim?
As each council member knows, we do that in our reports to council. It's to evaluate the strengths, the weaknesses, opportunities and threats of any item. An example would be if we proposed that we're going to build a substation, what is the strength? We're building to the backbone. What would be the weakness acquiring the land and the exposure of another substation? What are the opportunities that could give us expansion in that area? And what are the threats, i.e. it could be a pollution issue because of transformers? So that, just to give you a brief overview of what a SWOT analysis would be.
So, thank you, Jim. And the utility commission is going to work closely with staff on optimizing the utility and to try to squeeze every dollar of cost out of this budget that we can to bring every dollar of rate savings we can to our ratepayers. But the reality of our situation is that 65, approximately 65% of our current rates are driven by our cost of power. And this is so high because we're required to purchase power rates at well above, we're required to purchase power at well above market rate through these contracts we've entered into. So the, really, the only way to get significant rate reductions is to pay somebody to take over these FMPA contracts. That's what we have done in the negotiation with the current contract that we have with OUC. They've been a great partner, working with us and to take on these contracts for us, but we're having to pay them to do that. And so that's where we can make really significant savings, is we need to change this, we need to get out from underneath these contracts. So we made a motion that we continue to pursue a path to come out from underneath the FMPA entitlement contracts, and that the best path that we can see at this point in time is a sale to Florida Power and Light. This motion passed six to one. Now, the dissenting vote was actually, I think, in favor of it, but he doesn't, didn't think it was necessary or didn't think it was strong enough, but he's here, and so if he chooses to come in public comment and speak to the why he voted against this motion, I think that would be good. So that's my report. I'm happy to take any questions, and I look forward to continuing to serve the city in this capacity.
Questions from the city council, Mr. Turner, do you have one?
No, thank you very much, and thanks for all the members for their perseverance and stamina to make it through eight hours of meetings. I know it's, once again, part of a learning curve as we've shifted over this membership and to get people back into these issues, and, thank you.
I have a comment. I don't disagree with anything you said, but not only are the FMPA contracts at extreme disadvantage to marketplace, but the OUC contract, signed in 2008 and implemented January 1st, 2010, is also at a competitive disadvantage. And that's part of the whole negotiation, but we must recognize that both of them are problems. Thank you. I've seen no questions from the city council. We'll go move on to general public comment. Like you to hold it to three minutes if you can, no longer than five. And this caveat, if you want to speak on a matter, speak on it only once, please. As things come up on the agenda, you can then speak on the agenda on that matter if you like, but don't speak both now and then. Once is enough, okay? Mr. Hetty, we're pleased to have you this morning.
The interest in time constraints is disturbing. The only way an elected body can do its job if they're to represent the public is to listen to the public, and sometimes that takes more than one opportunity to speak to you. The mayor and the chairman of the Rail Commission sent out a letter on the 20th, and the first sentence of the letter says that the city endorses and supports, or whatever, the rail. And on the second page is a sentence that says that the only option that we have is for quiet zones. And two things. I think that the city council appointed a rail commission to bring back a recommendation, and to date, that commission has not brought back a recommendation to support anything. We're still putting facts together. And the second thing is certainly, there are other answers other than the taxpayers digging into their pocket for quiet zones. I think that if this public, sorry, private company wants to come to town and come up the East Coast with a high-speed rail, they have the rights that they have with their right-of-way, but I think that this constant contribution by the taxpayers to a private enterprise is over the top. The governor decided to give them $214 million. That's a, that's a help to them. They've applied for loans from, that are going to be backed by us, the taxpayers. If they default, we, the taxpayers, get to pick up the loans and pick up the debt, but that won't, that won't in any way take away from the parent corporations' new tracts that they have at taxpayer expense. So I think lots of, lots of things still need to be discussed. The rail commission still needs to come with some recommendation, and I think that the mayor sending out letters saying that we only have one choice, the mayor sending out letters that we support this project are counterproductive to the, to the benefit the community at large.
Thank you, Ms. Hetty. Go ahead.
Good morning. Jerry Wyke, Vice Mayor of Indian River Shores. I have with me a letter I'd like to read into the record from our mayor, Brian Barefoot. It's addressed to Dear Mayor Winger. With consensus of the Town Council of Indian River Shores gained at our last meeting on March 27th, I am writing this letter. It is our understanding that you and city manager Jim O'Connor will be meeting with representatives of the Florida Municipal Power Agency on April 2nd. The Town Council strongly recommends that you make every effort to persuade the FMPA to return to the negotiation table in good faith and openly support the sale of the city electric utility to Florida Power and Light Company. It is well-known that the city of Vero Beach has conducted two prior referendums, which resulted in an overwhelming majority of your residents in favor of the sale of the electric utility to Florida Power and Light. It is also the city council's responsibility to appropriately represent those residents who are customers of the city electric utility who reside within the town of Indian River Shores, as well as those customers who reside in uncooperated areas of the county. While the town continues to be supportive of this sale, we also recognize our obligation to our constituents to actively pursue and investigate any and all available options to obtain the most reasonable electric rates, electric rates possible for our residents in the shortest amount of time. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I have the letters here, like, put to the record. One for everyone. And at this time, I also like to make some comments on behalf of myself, as a ratepayer of the city of the electric utility company. I mean, it's, for the record, again, my name is Jerry Wyke, Southampton Terrace, Indian River Shores, Florida, a ratepayer of the city utility. I mean, it's a no-brainer that everybody wants low electric rates. I mean, that's not my primary concern, although it's nice, everybody wants to pay less for everything they buy. But my biggest concern is the future, the unknown with the FMPA, the Florida Municipal Power Agency. In the past, they've entered into some, or made some financial decisions that probably weren't the best around. They entered into some futures contracts that were bad. They seemed to be good at the idea at the beginning. They entered into building a coal-fired power plant, sold a lot of bonds. They refinanced their bonds. They have some unending contracts that are of extreme concern to me, because we don't know what the future's going to happen. In the beginning, the city entered into these contracts, I believe the city was a founding member of the FMPA and formed it. It seemed like a good idea at the time, and I'm sure they all thought it was, that it was a good idea and in the future would be to their benefit. However, like everything else, sometimes things don't go as you always planned. And I kind of liken this to like a marriage. You enter into a marriage, you're thinking it's the greatest thing going, your spouse you're going to marry, but then after a while, things start to go bad, or whatever. I mean, I would know that myself.
Go on, Sherri, you're in trouble.
However, I'm safe. However, sometimes it has to end in a breakup or a divorce. And we all know, well, I hear anyway, that divorces are very, very expensive to get out of it. And it seems that's the same situation here. We entered into these contracts with good intentions, but now we see that there's been a lot of problems. The future doesn't look very bright. They keep refinancing bonds, there's unending contracts, and it's going to be expensive to get out of. Just recently, they made an offer to FPNL for $52 million that they would then let Vero Beach get out, or they would sell it to FPNL. And I guess, to their amazement, FPNL came back and said, okay, we'll get, come up with 26 million, and the ratepayers would have to then pay off over the next three or four years, whatever it may be, another 26 million, which was very nice of them, interest-free. However, it seems that they've changed their mind. They made a deal for 52 million, and now they're re-negging on that. They want more, or whatever they do. I mean, this is the meeting you're going to have with them this week, and I would, I mean, anytime you make a deal with somebody to sell something or for a price, and then you change your mind later on, you know, that's poor business, in my opinion. And we have to do something about that. I mean, we've, seems like we created a monster. We don't know the future. There's a lot of unknowns, and it's going to be expensive to get out. But even so, if you pay it off in three or four years, the electric rate- But even so, if you pay it off in three or four years, the electric rate will be down from what it is now, anywhere's, let's say, an average of 10% for that time period. And then after that time, we will then have FPNL rates, which would be considerably lower than that. I mean, you're in a bind. It's very difficult for you to reduce your rates because you have to buy your power from the FMPA. That's an agency that's, to me, an unnecessary form of, another layer of government in there. They're actors of middlemen. They buy the electricity, they resell it to us. It looks like a bad situation. I think the sooner we can break away from them, even if our electric rates stay the same, it wouldn't bother me as much as it would be that we break away from them to begin with. I think that's our biggest problem we're facing. And I hope you would reconsider that and break those contracts at whatever it may cost. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, just in the interest of transparency and make sure that they have no question, would you please turn your telephone off?
Oh, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council.
The telephone was not on, but I will certainly comply with whatever Ms. Stern was.
You're seeing texts.
I was not texting anybody.
So does everybody else.
Mayor and members of council, my name is Penny Chandler. I'm the president of the Indian River County Chamber of Commerce, and I am here on behalf of our Board of Directors. FPL has negotiated in good faith to consummate the change in power provider as approved by a large majority of city and county residents currently being served by Vero Beach Utilities. The Chamber of Commerce represents the business community, which has expressed its desires to you, our elected officials, to proceed in good faith by supporting the sale to FPL. We urge the Vero Beach City Council to endorse without delay the proposal by FPL to provide an immediate discount on customer bills. This will repay either the FMPA or the OUC, the amount required to take on Vero Beach power entitlements for the first three years and guarantees FPL rates permanently. The situation for ratepayers and business owners in Indian River County is significantly better than the high rates we are paying today. We urge you to use the meeting Wednesday, April 2nd with FMPA as an opportunity to state the city's strong desire to sell to Florida Power and Light and to facilitate a meeting of all parties to move forward with the sale. The sale will result in more than $20 million in annual savings that may be reinvested into this community and is strongly endorsed by the Board of Directors of the Indian River County Chamber of Commerce. Therefore, we urge the city council to take all necessary steps to move forward the sale of Vero Beach Electric to Florida Power and Light, including strongly voicing the will of the people to FMPA and to other FMPA member cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, if you're next, or is Mrs. Frye?
Good morning, Mayor, council members. Phyllis Frye, 275 Date Palm Road. I've been away, so I'd like to take a moment to publicly thank this council for during the past years, you've shown an exceptional leadership, in my opinion, and compassion for this community. Your good stewardship and careful planning have made Vero Beach the jewel of the Treasure Coast. And it's my home, and you've helped make it a great place to live. I remember working with you and the Parks Service to protect the recreational green space by the Bob Summers Ball Field from construction of a 15,000-square-foot building, as you remember, that would have been surrounded by asphalt and traffic. And we filled this chamber until the fire marshal said no more, and you listened to the will of the people. Even though we stood in long lines, you listened. Two years later, I watched as Max the Pup delivered a sack full with thousands of signatures and petitions by people who wanted to continue the tradition of protecting the open spaces by pledging their time and resources to our community, and once again, you responded to the will of the people. Next came the issue of saving the forest over by the Beachland Woodland School. Jim Connor, you helped with your resources to shift that traffic and work with their engineers so that it would not disrupt our homes and community in Central Beach. And for that, we thank you. And that forest still is full of wildlife and those untouched trees. More recently, you helped restore our representative government by voting no to the federal overreach of 750. In keeping with your wise decision, the following entities also withdrew: Indian River County, St. Lucie County, Martin County, the city of Port St. Lucie, the city of Stuart, the city of Boca Raton, the town of Indian River Shores, the town of Orchid, the Vero Beach Metropolitan Organization, and the Indian River School Board. So I've returned from months of campaigning to the South, and I've stood before numerous councils and commissions. And I want you to know that I'm really privileged and blessed here, and I'll never take the privilege of free speech or the special character of the people in this chamber on both sides of the dais. It's good to be home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie Wilson, Post Office, Box 651114, Vero Beach, Florida. I am a city of Vero Beach resident. Before I run out of time, I'd like to mention that, first of all, I'm very appreciative of the Enterprise Zone presentation, and my hat's off to the Indian River Chamber of Commerce for that work. I hope they continue to do that work. I'm even more pleased that they have now finally joined us after all these years of being silent to urge the city council to work towards the sale of Vero Electric. It is interesting that today is my, yesterday was my last day as the organizational president of the Vero Beach Chamber of Commerce. And we have a new executive director, which we'll introduce at our next meeting. So I have been able to be replaced as of today. Today is my first day of not being the chairman of the Vero Beach Chamber of Commerce after a successful launch. I think you'll see some really wonderful things coming up. With Mr. Stradler's presentation, one of the things that he forgot to mention is that about half of the meeting yesterday at the Utilities Authority was surrounding something we learned yesterday, and that is that George Christopher, who is a member of that committee, has been in direct conversation with FMPA. That Mr. Christopher admitted yesterday that he had access to documents that the other members of the committee did not have. I must apologize, I didn't misspeak. I was talking yesterday about a sunshine violation, which may or may not be true or be accurate. What I really was talking, meant to say, is this public records documents violation that appears to have occurred. And so I would like to formally, on the record, file a complaint of documents, public documents, records, problem at the Utilities Commission surrounding Mr. Christopher. Most of the other members of the commission said that they had not had ex parte conversations with FMPA. Mr. Christopher finally, after some nudging, admitted that he had. One or more of the other commission failed to answer the question, even though it was posed to each person. That is a problem. And so I'd like to put on the record that I formally request the documents. It was very clear, I don't believe that the commission members are given telephones or computers. And since it was admitted that there has been conversation with the FMPA, that means it had to have been done on his personal telephone or in writing. And as a result, I formally request any documents, conversations, or records of conversations that occurred between Mr. Christopher and someone at the FMPA, or particularly the bond councils. Mr. Christopher made comments of information that he had from bond councils that no other member of the committee had access to. So the question is going to be, two weeks ago, we found, Mr. Mayor, that you were to, had, off the record, invited Mr. Christopher to accompany you. We now find that Mr. Christopher is apparently carrying water for the FMPA. So when we, when we wonder-
Mr. Wilson, that's not correct, but continue, please.
He has documents that came directly from the FMPA, which he admitted came in while he was on the council.
Let's, let me, Mrs. Vock, the proper method for Mr. Wilson to require any documents that Mr. Christopher might have since he was on the Utility Commission some month or something would be to file with you, would it not?
Correct.
And any telephone calls since he was appointed. He did turn over a whole ream of documents in the meeting yesterday, which he said came from FMPA. Whether before or after the operative date, I don't know.
Well, two things, Mr. Chairman. One is how to determine what information he received before and what information he received after. The second I'd like to point out is that a public records request does not have to be in writing. A public records request may be done publicly and verbally, which I've just done.
Mr. Comett?
Yeah, that's correct. It doesn't have to be in writing. The request should go to the custodian of the record. And Tammy is our general custodian, and she can check with Mr. Christopher to see what he has.
Would you give her, while we sit here, direction as to what she should request of Mr. Christopher?
Well, it would be anything on that subject since he was appointed to the board.
Since he was really nominated, not appointed, correct?
Well, when he was appointed.
Right.
Nominated and appointed usually happens at the same meeting, so.
So she would request of him, in writing, anything that he received from FMPA after that day?
Doesn't have to be in writing, no. All she has to do is call him and let him know, however she wants to do it.
Yeah, I will talk to Mr. Christopher about the records.
Have we satisfied your request on that, Mr. Wilson?
Well, clearly, what we're trying to do is parse the difference between what he knew before your appointment and what he knew afterwards. I can understand why you wouldn't want that to be known. But the real question here is the transparency and the trust of the elected officials we have. And the question is, whose message are you carrying? When you go to this meeting, are you carrying George Christopher's message from the Indian River Neighborhood Association, where he's clearly stated in the Utilities Commission that he's made up his mind based upon information he got from the FMPA? Are you carrying that message since you've already told people that he is your legal advisor? So is he carrying-
I'll give you some, first of all, you said yesterday, Mr. Christopher is a fine lawyer. Actually, you misstated it, he's a brilliant lawyer. But you said yourself that he was a fine lawyer. Mr. Christopher is a personal friend of mine, and he has been for some long period of time. He brought forward lots of information yesterday to the benefit of the Utility Commission regarding the various contracts. There is nothing in law that prohibits an individual, whether on a commission or not on a commission, to gain information from wherever that information can be gained for the benefit of the knowledge of that individual and helping. Now, one other comment for you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Christopher and I don't agree on most things, as a matter of fact. We're members of the opposite parties. We have very strong positions in that. So I only, I can be friendly with someone I don't completely agree with. I don't agree with Mr. Christopher.
Me too.
And with you, too. I can feel the same about you. But substantially, you know, he has a brilliant legal mind, and that I honor. And for him to reach out and try to gather information, there's nothing wrong with that. If it's in writing, he needs to give it to the city clerk. That's clearly true.
Well, I agree with you that he is a brilliant lawyer. He's brilliant enough to be able to manipulate this situation. And what my problem is, is that we've had the public that keeps asking why this isn't getting done, and now we're finding out why this isn't getting done. It's because we have people, this is like in the Revolutionary War, there were people that sided with Britain. And if we had these kind of people in the Revolutionary War, we would still be using the British pound and singing hail to the king. So what we have here is we've got the public who has been told that we are going to go forward with the sale, and we're told by the people that are on this commission, and yet you're being advised by the chief anti-saleperson.
I'm being advised by a number of people. Mr.-
You haven't asked them to go with you to the negotiations.
Wait a minute, Mr., I have the floor for this moment, Mr. Wilson.
Oh, did you?
Yesterday, you used the term political theater.
Yes.
You're using political theater now in all deference. Political theater is not going to resolve this. And I would ask you a question. Do you trust Mr. Comett? Do you trust Mr. O'Connor? In other words, you may or may not. If you say not, that's fine. But what we are doing, we're going to have three people present there. And those three people are the people that are, you know, I think should be there. And each of us has a life behind us, and each of us talks to various people. And I ask you the question, do you trust Mr. O'Connor?
What difference would it make? I'm not there. The problem is, is you didn't ask me to go, and you didn't ask the press to go, and I have to wait a second. Mr. Schuman has to take another close-up negative picture, so we have to wait till he's done. You know, he doesn't have enough in his archives so far.
Well, Mr. Wilson, I mean, the meeting tomorrow, I have said I don't expect to accomplish a lot. We have no lawyer with us, negotiating lawyer. We're hoping to get on the path. I have a blue shirt on today because I want to get this sale done. I don't think a continuation of this rhetoric is useful.
Okay, well-
So, I mean, I think it's time to call it quits.
I will complete my statement. I understand, just like yesterday, they didn't want me to talk, and I understand you don't want me to talk.
Mr. Wilson, I'll do the same thing as Mr. O'Reilly does on my favorite television show. You may have the last word for 30 seconds, sir.
I don't know that my three minutes are up. Most of the three minutes were with you. The, here are the facts. We know now, after all what we've gone through, that we need to be out of the electric business. None of the red herrings, there's no casinos, there's no hurricane advantage, there's no partial sales, there's no way to parse the words that we've done since 1975. We've been told that if we'll just be patient, we'll have FPNL rates. It's absolutely not true. But what we have now is we've gotten it down to there's three groups of people who oppose this sale. The first are public employees and their respective unions who do not wish to have pension reform, because without the sale of this utility, there cannot be pension reform. The second are a group of people who benefit by other people paying their bills, i.e. George Christopher and the Indian River Neighborhood Association. And the third group are liberal Democrats who wish to have a toehold into the political process of Indian River County. My question to you, sir, is not whether or not, the question is not whether or not we should get out of the electric business and get out of the FMPA, it is how. And what we have found now is that the reason that we cannot go forward is because of the FMPA. I submit to you, sir, that we cannot go forward because there is no number that is appropriate for the FMPA, because they are in so much debt and so much trouble that they cannot lose any of their assets, which includes Vero Beach. I urge you to represent the public, the people who have spoken over and over again. And if y'all keep saying we can't do anything about the train, we can't do anything about electric rates, we can't do anything about Obamacare, we can't do anything about anything, then what good are you? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Joseph Gafanti here, 441 Holly Road. Let me begin with a little sincerity. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. That's sincere. It's appropriate for you people to meet today on April 1st. Oh, so appropriate. Number two, the meeting that's going to be tomorrow, yeah, it takes some people some time. The meeting should be recorded tomorrow. The public has a right to know what you people are going to do and say over there. And if Charlie Wilson were given a shot of sodium pentathol, he would say, no, I don't trust anybody here before him. And that would be appropriate. The meeting should be recorded. Unfortunately, there is no worthwhile press in Indian River County, so to invite the press would be ludicrous. Charlie Wilson should be invited. Anybody should be invited. But no, you're going to continue with this back-room-wheeling-dealing that got us here in the first place. That's what you people are going to do tomorrow. It's more back-room-wheeling-dealing that got us here in the first place with Nathan, Vitone, Gabbert, and maybe some others. Now, the reason why I came here this morning is to talk about the railroad situation. These are the concerns that are expressed in this document that I received from the city clerk. There are 11 of them. Number one, no, I can't memorize these, there's too many of them. Have to read them. No station or stop. Number two, increased railroad traffic and noise. Number three, a constant, unrelenting blowing of the horns throughout the entire length of the city. Number four, people will be significantly affected in their daily lives and activities. Number five, added noise of these twice-daily, hourly, twice, excuse me, twice-hourly trains sounding their horns before- sounding their horns before each of the crossings. Six, extraordinary increase in railroad traffic and noise. These are concerns that are expressed in the document. Seven, need to protect the health, there is a need to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents and businesses and visitors of the city. Eight, cost of several million dollars and an overwhelming burden to the residents and businesses of the city. Now, I'm not making these up. These are the words that are in the document, for the most part. Number nine, the city needs the financial assistance of the state. Number 10, need to lessen the impact and burden of the all-American, whatever it is, project. Number 11, all, I forget what the heck, what they've got going. They call it something. All-Aboard Florida, yeah, that's it. Need to provide for increased public safety. Now, that document is a resolution, the document to which I refer is a resolution. And this is by the city of Vero Beach, okay? They're all negative things. And by the way, I read the whole thing, and there's nothing positive, but here's what the document begins with. Whereas the city of Vero Beach, and I don't know what you mean by the city of Vero Beach, it most certainly isn't the public. Whereas the city of Vero Beach supports the efforts of all-aborde Florida to construct and operate a high-speed passenger rail system, et cetera, et cetera. That's a resolution that was signed by voted upon by, rather, Winger, yes. Kramer, yes. Fletcher, yes. Turner, yes. Graves, that's it. I'll try to remember that name. Yes. All five people, council members, voted for this slap. And to what end? You're going to support a system, this is what you voted on, you support a system that's very detrimental, overwhelmingly detrimental, to the city of Vero Beach. And for some insane, sloppy thought process that you have individually and collectively, you come up and support this thing. And here's why you support it, because there's a letter that was written by, and signed by, I don't know who wrote it, but signed by, well, I'll get to that in a minute. The letter is to Negron, and you're asking in this letter to take a tin cup and smash it in the face of every resident, every taxpayer in the state of Florida, not just Indian River County or Vero Beach, Indian River County, but the entire state of Florida. You're asking Negron to go to Tallahassee with the rest of the petty politicians up there and ask him to smash a tin cup in the face of every resident or every taxpayer in the state of Florida to support this heist, which is about to be perpetrated on the public. And here's what this letter starts out with, by saying. The city of Vero Beach supports the efforts of all-aborde Florida to construct and operate high-speed rail service. And guess who this is signed by? Anybody at home, you better put your coffee or martini down so you don't spill it. This is signed by, oh, Winger, he's the mayor, and Ken Diggs, former politician, but now he's the chairman of the Vero Beach High-Speed Rail Commission. Now, I like, I know you're not going to do it, but I'd like you to explain all this. But you don't want to do that, so I'll explain it for you. We have, individually and collectively, I'm speaking for you people now, to the public as if you were speaking, given a shot of sodium pentathol. We have no regard for the people, the taxpayers of this people, the city of Vero Beach. We know, we know when it's time to convey money, public money, as in laundering, up to the 46th floor of a building on, it's on 54th. I said one time 56, but 54th and 6th Avenue. That's what you people are doing. This is, this all-aborde thing is nothing but a heist, and it's too bad that you don't have the brains to recognize as such. It's a shame. I'm not finished, sir.
Well, Mr. Gaffanti, in deference to the public, could you wrap up, please?
Pardon, I wasn't listening. What?
I said in deference to the public. Could you wrap up, please?
Yeah, I'll wrap up. Yeah, I've completed my presentation, but I will say this. At the beginning of the meeting, the mayor mentioned something about 11:30, and I suggested if the mayor is so preoccupied with other matters, that maybe he could leave any time and not even return, ever. This is a public meeting, and the public has a lot to say, not only me, but Wilson and a whole bunch of other people. And it's apparent, apparently you people don't have a clue, either that or you're corrupt, one or the other. And let the public decide that. Good day, sir. And now you may thank me.
Thank you, Mr. Gaffanti. I think we're all agreed that the railroad coming through town is a tremendous negative, and we'd be better off without it. With that simple comment, I will go on to the next speaker.
Dr. Stephen Farady, Indian River County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think it's important, I want to emphasize one particular point that Scott Stradely made, and that's where he noted that for a 1% reduction in rates, you need $1 million reduction in cost. To essentially take care of the current difference, which is about 32%, you would need to reduce your costs $32 million. That's a virtual impossibility. Even to get down to single-digit is a virtual impossibility for the city. It's very important at this meeting tomorrow that be noted that the problems, the person that we had, or the firm that identified as having the problem was FPL. That's not the case. It's the FMPA. You are dealing with contracts which have no end, no termination point. To me, that is a violation of state law. It is very important, too, that it be recognized that you're not only representing the 39% of the ratepayers who elected you to office, but the 61% who do not. This is really a very critical meeting for them, because I think for them, it means what are alternative actions we take as a result of this meeting? If there's nothing substantive and positive coming out of this particular meeting, then I think they are forced to begin looking for alternative actions to seek lower rates for them, if in fact the city itself cannot achieve them. I think that should be noted to FMPA. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Farady. I think we all believe that the sale should be concluded. And I think we all believe that we need lower rates and that we will not get the, whatever the percentage difference is. So that's, I think, a given. Who's next, please? Ma'am, come forward, state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Eleanor Moulton, and I'm going to try and pull a Charlie Wilson and tell you my address is post office box 6354. I'm a city resident, and I live in Vero. This is only my second time ever to be up here, so I'm really nervous, but I have some questions. We're hearing a lot of people say a lot of things, and I think I probably need to direct my questions to Mr. Winger and Mr. Kramer, since you're the mayor and vice mayor. But way back when this first started, we had this fabulous chart from Glenn Herron telling us all this money that we were going to save. And now I'm hearing that it's going down, and not only that, but we're being asked to pay $26 million. Are we still getting $156 million? No, I didn't think so. But everybody drank that Kool-Aid, they drank that Kool-Aid and followed him down the path. Two of the council members did that. But now we're way down, I don't know what. Do you know what we're going to profit out of this?
No, nothing.
But at least we're being.
I don't know. The answer to the question.
And that's it. We're being asked to give us ourselves, but pay $26 million to do it. That doesn't make sense. It really doesn't make sense.
Mr. Farady, if I may, excuse us, but that $26 million, that's $26 million less reduction on your, you're still getting lower electric rates than you are now. Right now, you're paying 32% more than FPL. And in order to recover that $26 million, you are going to get a reduction on your rate. It just will, it will be for a three-year period until that 26 is recovered. So it's not money coming out of your pocket. In fact, you are going to benefit, because your rates will be lower.
Well, now, you're saying 30%. I've heard as low as 18%. I mean, every day, there's a different figure in the paper.
Certainly, ma'am, and I understand your confusion. In January, when I made my presentation, I used the Vero Beach electric rates versus Florida Power and Lights as published in the Florida Municipal Electric Association online, which is open to anyone. You can go and check it. It's posted on a comparative basis, on a monthly basis, and just have to look. You do need to realize, check whether it's including taxes or not. But as of January, it was the 32% difference for residential rates. And on the average, for our business customers, there was a 42% differential.
Okay, now, the other thing, I have read in the paper that FPNL right now is asking for an increase. Is that correct? Okay, so they're going to get an increase in price. Then, if this goes through, they're going to charge us a surcharge for four years. Then, in four years' time, they're going to be ready for another increase. So this 30% that we're going to be saving is like the $156 million that Glenn Herron offered us, right?
Well, keep in mind, you're also going to get a tax increase that will happen indefinitely.
Right. And so that's why I'm saying, and all the opinion is 30% less, just like they heard $156 million with Herron, but it changed. And from what I'm hearing, the 30% is going to go way down, too, because they keep getting increases, and we've got the surcharge. I just, I just had questions about that. To me, it sounds a lot like, you know, if you like your doctor, you can keep him. We're hearing that. That didn't work out. You get $156 million if you like this. That didn't work out. Another thing, I've lived in Vero all my life, 60-plus years, and I've lived in the city all my life. And it sort of concerns me that people who've lived here five years, eight years, 12 years, they don't even live in the city, you know, try to force you guys. I mean, you guys put up with a lot of abuse. And I can remember, I've watched these programs for years, even though I don't attend them, and I have seen a particular person taken off by the police many times. When you were mayor, you did it one time. You had him taken off. How come when Charlie Wilson gets up here and gets so rude like he does, why do you all have to take it? Why can't he be taken off? Because I think it's very abusive what you have to put up with. I mean, everybody has a difference of opinion, but you can disagree nicely, right? You don't have to disagree and be ugly. And it just bothers me that every time I watch one of these, I get to see him show his butt. And I'm tired of seeing his butt. As a citizen of Vero, I'm tired of seeing it. One other question I wanted to ask you, it says, you keep hearing over and over, in fact, somebody today read a letter where it said, most of the voters of Indian River County, no, I'm sorry, most of the voters of the city of Vero voted for this. My understanding is that when it was voted on, first of all, we didn't really know what we were voting on, number one. Number two, it was approximately, what, 60, 40? But I also heard only, what was it, less than 30% or right around 30% of the voters voted? So you don't know what the other 70% feel. So for, somebody to get up here and say, the majority of the voters, the majority of the people that voted voted for it, but we don't know that the majority of the city of Vero Beach people are for it or against it. We don't know. And to be able to get up and say something like that, to me, sounds like you're sort of telling a lie. One other thing I wanted to ask you. It seems like everything I hear is being blamed on the FMPA, that they're the cause of everything. But that's not true. Isn't there other?
We have, and I'll answer this one question, and then we need to move on, and I hate to be rude. We have a 20-year contract with OUC that's disadvantages, disadvantageous as to rates. It does not allow us to operate the plant or close the plant down. We have many poor agreements that were signed by various city councils. To put it prosaically, the ox is in the ditch. And I will make one other comment to what you said. I'm increasingly getting comments, and people are calling me about people, you know, taking abusive roles, and it's hard to deal with, but we're going to have to deal with it. In other words, that there needs to be a more civil dialogue. And I appreciate your comments and for coming up here.
Well, I wish y'all success tomorrow. I know you've had a lot of fingers pointed at you, but I hope things go well with you. And thank you for answering my questions.
Mr. Herron.
Good morning, Council Glenn Herron, 1964 Gray Falcon Circle Southwest. And thank you for the time to make a few comments. Mr. Winger, I certainly, I'll repeat myself again from last week, two weeks ago, I certainly wish you well tomorrow in your negotiation with the FMPA's bureaucracy. And I do want to make certain that when you're dealing with these people, that you're dealing with the FMPA's bureaucracy, as opposed to the member cities who are also like us, owners in these bad deals that you refer to. So with that, I wanted to talk about perhaps our next step. Now, interestingly, next week at the Taxpayers Association, we're going to be having a discussion about the Vero Electric Utility System and the FMPA in particular, and try to educate the public about what is the nature of the FMPA. In closing, I want to try to bring the next part of the discussion about the FMPA. And I couldn't be more pleased that the public is now starting to talk about the FMPA and what is it. We all know that we want to get out of the Vero Electric System. We all know we can't compete. I mean, we've been voted, we've voted on that numerous times. We definitely want to sell the FPNL and capture that rate savings. Now, I'd be certainly happy if we could get the deal done, that FPNL had to put on the table and pay the $26 million and be done with it. I mean, look, that's only one year's worth of rate savings if you paid it off in one year, and then you finally have FPNL rates forever and all time. So I would certainly be happy with that. But if, for some reason, the FMPA bureaucracy, not our member cities, put up a fight to this, then I would remind them that there, in the world of accounting, there's a concept called substance over form. And that, what I mean by that is, after 30 years of ownership in the FMPA, we have significant assets up there. We have cash, we have investments, and we have generation assets. Now, they're telling us to just go ahead and pay a $52 million penalty to get out, but don't forget, we are being stripped of all of our member, all of our assets that we have helped build over the last 30 years, cash, investments, and generation value. No effort on their part do I see them mitigating their damages by selling off those assets and using the proceeds to pay off the debt. So again, I go back to the concept of substance over form. The form might be that we have these legal contracts that go into 2066 beyond the lives of most people living today, but the economic reality, the substance is, we own cash, investments, and generation assets, and they are being stripped from us, and they are, and we are asking to pay a penalty on top. Is the fastest path to pay the penalty and get out? Absolutely. But I'd like you, Mr. Winger, to be, to be strong with the bureaucracy tomorrow, because that's who you're dealing with, is the FMPA bureaucracy. And as you defend us from the FMPA's bureaucracy, so do you defend the other 20 member cities who are also in the same boat. So good luck tomorrow.
Jim, do you have any comment? I don't expect any negotiations, really. What is your expectation?
My expectations would be that we have an agreement that we can bring the parties back together and get to the same, get around the table again, and that we try to make sure that all those involved in this process are included in those discussions. And so that, that would be my number-one goal.
Mr. Tonkel.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you. J. Rock Tonkel, a resident of the unincorporated county, Grand Harbor, and a member of the Utility Commission. I'll be brief. I want to talk about process for just a second. In yesterday's meeting, if you have seen it or watched, at the end of the meeting, I thought it might be a good idea to have Scott Stradely, the chairperson of the Utilities Commission, accompany you and your team tomorrow. He refused because of his prior business commitments. I think the idea is sound and valid, and that's before I read today's newspaper article by by Rich Miller, talking about the necessity for transparency. I think that ought to be given some serious consideration. I know the time is short. I simply would urge you to think about having a public representative from the paper there, present, reporting on the tenor and the substance of the meeting. Certainly, it was also mentioned today that failing that, the meeting, I think, of necessity needs to be recorded and put in the public documents for consumption and interpretation by members of the public and the citizens of both the city and the county. The only other thing I'll do, as Scott mentioned, that I was the dissenting vote, the utility commission with respect to the resolution supporting finding a way out of the entitlements and the cost, and also what I thought was a very weak reference to being tied to FPL. What I was suggesting is that our only reference point should be the partnership with FPL, and that's the only reason I voted against it. I'm clearly, clearly behind the intent of that resolution, and, and I'm happy to provide that clarification. Finally, you've said publicly, Mr. Mayor, that you don't have high expectations for tomorrow. You've said it in a variety of different ways, that not much will come out of the meeting. Personally, after having been involved in, as you have, a number of negotiations, I would have preferred that you have alerted the public to the fact that you have some definitive expectations, and then, in fact, you're there to seek a solution and a resolution to a problem that is confronting us in terms of getting out of the stalemate and the preservation, potentially, of the status quo, which is unacceptable. It's unacceptable to the ratepayers and has, and I think you've reinforced that through your public statements, that you're in favor of the sale. I trust both of those men. I think they're very competent. I'm glad they're going to accompany you. But they are employees, if you will. They are sensitive to their relationship to the city council, and I think that another public member simply would allow for the kind of fairness in reporting that's required under these circumstances. So thank you for the time. I hope you'll consider at least the thought of inviting the media, if not certainly recording the meeting, which all of us can review subsequently. Thank you.
I think Mr. O'Connor accurately stated what I believe to be the case. And when you said I didn't have great expectations, what we're looking for is a path. I think I listened twice to the almost-two-hour meeting yesterday. I have a DVD of it. And I think brought out in that meeting were, you know, the three major hurdles which has, as of this point, after three years, have not been faced with FMPA. We are in no position tomorrow to deal with those particular hurdles. And I think what Mr. O'Connor said is correct. We have a situation where there were two letters each, February 25th, 4th and 5th, and then March 5th was one of them, and there was another one, I think it was March 10th, from the two parties. And quite frankly, they're not on the same track. And if they're not on the same track, we're going to have difficulty concluding this. I think what Mr. O'Connor said is correct. What, we have no hope, we have, we are not negotiating. What we want to do is get the train back on the track. And the paper accurately stated my understanding, which, and we got a letter on March 5th, and there were conversations with, not with myself, I've not talked to FMPA, with Mr. O'Connor as to who should come to see if we can accomplish what Mr. O'Connor just said. And I think trying to expand it larger than it is risks that we may not be able to get the train back on the track. So I think you're going to have to trust myself, Mr. O'Connor, and Mr. Comet, and we will, when we come back at the appropriate time, and the appropriate time involves talking to our attorneys, other attorneys, to Florida Power and Light, we will give you our best idea of where we are and how we should move forward. But I'm not willing, I would rather not go, quite frankly, Rock. But if we're going to go, give us the best chance. Don't try to tie our hands behind our back.
Well, I'm not trying to do, I'm trying to restore, if you will, any lost faith that the public has in the city council and their deliberations up to date. I'm not trying to be argumentative with you. It goes with the turf, and you have inherited that and you sought it. I just think that the, the fact remains is that the train is on the sidetrack, and the public needs to have a sense of direction that you're going to bring it back to the main track. And if, in fact, what Mr. O'Connor said today turns out to be reality, I'll see that as a very positive event. And I hope, and I think it's important, however, that that's your, that's your objective and should have been your objective from day one.
He stated the objective. It's clearly stated.
Today, he did.
I asked him to state it.
Should have been stated before. Thank you.
Mr. Whittle.
Herb Whittle, 19 Park Avenue, City. I'm also on the utility commission. I was really upset with Mr. Wilson's attacks the last few days. I happen to be a member of IRNA. I happen to know Mr. Christopher. And I was in, interesting enough, I was invited to the Taxpayers Association to talk against the sale. I am for the sale. Everybody is for the sale, some in different manners. But there are people around here that, anybody that isn't, their way is against the sale. I have never heard the IRNA say anything against the sale. I have never heard Mr. Christopher say anything against the sale, and I am for the sale. I just want to let you know that, and good luck.
Mr. Degg.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Council. Ken Degg, 1846 21st Avenue. I sit on your rail commission as your chairman. A couple of references made today about a letter that was sent out. In the letter, if you go through the letter, you'll find that it talks about Vero Beach having very serious concerns with this project that's coming through our city. Want to bring to your attention, one of the things that I want you to have in your mind is what's coming with this is the additional freight trains. They claim they're going to be putting in a number-two track to the west of our track. If you follow south of what's going on here at the, at one of the ports, they're going to have a very large train depot. They have been gearing up for freight for some years now. This has been in the works. Two and a half years ago, it came into the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council as a concept. A lot of the elected officials were in favor of it. Now that it's rolling out there, there's a lot of officials that are not too happy with this program. There's no schedule stops, and you know the rest of the story. This letter was sent to Senator Negron to, as this thing is rolling forward, in the event that they do come through here, the high-speed rail, maybe we'll see it, maybe we don't, we don't know for sure. But I can tell you, with the way they're gearing up, if you follow the conversation on the Panama Canal, with the way they enlarge that, and the way they're enlarging the ports to the south of us with the freight, that's what we need to be really concerned about as a city, as these freight trains come through here. If you go back at some of our meetings, they talked about lengthening their freight trains and adding more freight trains. Many concerns have come in from area residents to the west of the tracks here, our city residents, our county residents. How are they going to get to the hospitals? Their, or hospital, they're very worried about that. So if you have a freight train that stops, or the long freight trains, you need an ambulance, again, the list is lengthy. Business owners in our downtown area that are stakeholders, they have some serious, serious concerns with this project. And now that we have the freight on the table, I want you to keep that in your minds. We're going to have to deal with that. Railroad issues come under the federal guidelines, very, very difficult to fight. If you're going to come up with anything, you have to work city, counties, join with other counties. It goes then to the state, to your state people, your state legislators, then it will go to the federal legislators to help with the regulations. Sooner or later, the cities and counties, people want to know their rights. What are we going to do to fight this? How can we fight it? I feel that there is a way. Your rail commission is working very hard. You gave a charge at your last meeting. Reach out. A number of the members on the rail commission have reached out. I've reached out to Congressman Posey's office to find out where they stand on this. I put in two calls thus far. An email came in yesterday afternoon. Congressman Posey's chief of staff will be giving me a call for me to give the individual a briefing on what's going on with this situation. I want to find out how they can help us in the future. Back to the letter to Senator Negron, if there's any funding available to help us if we're going to have an impact on our community with the quiet safety zones, other things of what could happen to us, we're going to need some help with the monies. We, we don't have very much money, even if we wanted to do a quiet zone, there's no money in the budget to do one. And people are concerned when that, if the high-speed rail does come in, it hits the county, the horn sounds till the time it leaves. Then we go right back to the freight trains coming through. You'll, you'll hear those horns, no telling how many times an hour. So these are some of the things that we're looking at that are going to impact our community. That letter that was sent out, a number of those issues are addressed. The other thing I'd like you to keep in the back of your mind, a few, I think a few weeks ago, I spoke before the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. They were making some recommendations to the feds as far as what could they, what could they do to start the impacts, the impacts that it's going to have? How can they get some help? One of my suggestions was, could you please extend the comment, public comment time an additional 45 days? This is for the EIS study. When the EIS study comes out, right now in the study, you're only given, given 45 days to make your comments. That's not very much time. Now, they did put into their recommendations, my humble request, to possibly extend it to 45 days. That has not been granted yet. Now, I know, I think today at the county, one of the county commissioners is asking also for an extension. At our next rail commission meeting, I'm going to run this by the other commissioners and see what their pleasure is as far as recommending to you all to jump on board with this to actually either extend it another 45 days or 180 days. We're going to need more time. The EIS study, when that comes out, the concerns as cities and counties, they have to be packaged properly so we can get the help. It's okay to complain and, and find fault and everything else, but if you don't have things in order, we're just going to be ignored. This is coming, and the freight, the freight is what we need to be concerned with, with the length of these trains. So I just wanted to leave you with those thoughts. And, and the other thing, I'd like to thank all of you up there for the job that you're doing, and you're, to my knowledge, the first city that actually put together a rail commission. So thank you for doing that. You know, thank you for that leadership. And a lot of people have been watching those rail commission meetings, gathering their thoughts, and it's been helping out other cities and other counties. So thank you for taking the leadership role in that. I appreciate your time.
Okay, any further comment?
Daniel Mattson, I'm a county resident, mayor, council. Thank you for giving me this moment to speak. At the last council meeting, or the one before mayor, you said that you sent out a directive to pray for this. So I have been diligently praying for it, and I'm hoping that it goes through. Our nation's been fortunate to have many leaders from beginning of its history with George Washington, Jefferson, Abraham Lincoln, and Martin Luther King Jr., John Kennedy, Ronald Reagan, tear this wall down, Mr. Gorbachev. And I think my prayer for you is that you will walk into that meeting as Moses, even though he didn't want to be there, did with Pharaoh, and say, let Vero Beach go, with a position of strength, because you have, I know there's a fringe element in this city who's very vocal against this sale, but the majority of people are absolutely for this sale. And you have those people, just like Moses had the Lord telling him, you have the people of Vero Beach, and you have 20,000 county customers who are behind you. And I urge you, and I pray for you tomorrow, that you will stand up. You've been picked and chosen for this task or purpose, and I know you're up to it, and I, I'm hoping, and I hope the rest of the council prays for this also. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments. It's probably, probably appropriate. I, and I, I think it's three council meetings ago, I wrote a five-page paper, which I read. And I think it's clear that the best option for the people of Vero Beach, the greater community, not just the voters, is to sell the electric company of Florida Power and Light. And then what we would do is use the working capital, in other words, the cash that's used in the business for receivables and inventories and such as that, transformer inventories, to defees the pension obligation that we've built up over the years, for whatever reason. And I think that's the best solution. I hope we can get there. That's all I got to say. Okay, if there's no more comment, I'd like to close comment and take a break to 11:30. All right, break to 11:30.